All right, folks, let's uh call this meeting to order then. It is seven thirty four. It is Tuesday, June twenty third, two thousand and twenty. Uh, this is the third, uh, the fourth Tuesday of June's Borough Council Meeting for Bridgeport. So folks, uh, if you could please all rise and pledge the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation. Indivisible, liberty, justice. All right, and Angela, roll call, please.
Corey Scott.
Here.
James B.
Here.
Randy Bennett. Randy Bennett.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Schenk.
Here. That sounds like we have all seven council members accounted for. Thank you, Angela. Uh, and folks listening, just to notice, we did have an executive session this evening from six thirty to seven thirty, uh, where we discussed, uh, matters out of the public eye. And um, I think moving forward, we can add things over to Keith. Unless Paul, unless there's another official announcement we need on the record regarding the executive session.
No, that was, that was fine. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, good evening, everybody. Hope everybody is, uh, is doing well. Uh, first up for council consideration, adoption of council meeting minutes for the May twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty meeting.
Go move.
Back in.
Heard, uh, I think motion there from Randy Bennett, seconded by Ms. Nolan. We have any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, next up for council consideration, adoption of resolution two thousand and twenty dash twenty, recognizing June nineteenth as Juneteenth National Freedom Day.
And Keith, I'll, uh, I'll speak for a moment on this, and I'm sure I'm not going to do it justice. Uh, but I'll just say a few words. Uh, folks, listening over the last few weeks, uh, we've seen a lot in the media. We've seen a lot around our country, uh, after the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. So we've seen a lot of public commentary on police reform, but uh, above and beyond that, and in a wider scope, we've seen a lot of public discussion, uh, and a probably a lot of public discussion that has been a long time coming on the black experience in America. And I think this is something that council wanted to put forward, uh, as a resolution recognizing Juneteenth as National Freedom Day. And it's an effort, uh, however small it may be, however late it may be, it's something that we can do, uh, as a way again to recognize, uh, and honor that black experience. And just, I'm not going to read over the entire resolution. I do have it in front of me. But Juneteenth National Freedom Day, uh, this year was June nineteenth. Uh, it recognizes June nineteenth of eighteen sixty-five, uh, as the day that Union ships, uh, in the Civil War made it to the Galveston, to Galveston Island in Texas. Uh, and that was actually two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, but there were still enslaved people in Galveston had not heard, or the news had not reached Galveston that the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed. So the enslaved people there had no idea uh, that the government had taken that action. So as a day to be celebrated as a day of freedom, uh, as a day to honor the resilience and courage of the enslaved people all over America, and particularly that day, when word of the emancipation made it to the, to, to sort of the, the far corners of the country where it had not. Uh, that's what this day celebrates. Uh, it's a day that's gained a lot of prominence, uh, just recently and a lot of national discussion. Uh, Governor Wolf signed a declaration making it a state holiday recently. Uh, county offices, um, declared it county holiday and shut their offices down for the day recently. So I think this is something we should do in Bridgeport, and I'll leave it there. Uh, and if this passes today, we'll make sure that we get this resolution out to the public immediately so everybody can see and read it for themselves.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I heard a motion made by Mr. Scott, and I believe seconded by Ms. Gundrum. Uh, do we have any other questions or commentary from council on the matter? Hearing none. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. Thank you, council.
Very good.
And, uh, Mr. Truman.
Yes.
Uh, when we do, when we do end this meeting, we get the recording of the meeting out. If you could please get that, uh, that resolution, a copy of that out to the public via various social media avenues, that would be great. I think we should get this out as soon as we can.
I can do that, and uh,
Thank you, sir.
It'll be the unsigned version, but I can get it out nonetheless.
That's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, uh, a discussion for council, uh, for, for the consideration of council, rather. The amendment of Bridgeport Borough zoning ordinance to address the definition of a front yard. Uh, members of council, in your packets, you will find a memorandum from me dated June nineteenth, pertaining to the, uh, the aforementioned topic. Over the last year, uh, Mr. Wanzick, the building code official for the borough, who I've asked to, uh, to jump on and join us for this meeting, and I have encountered several residents that have expressed frustration with, uh, borough code and zoning interpretations regarding lots that are deemed to have two front yards, and its effect on their ability to construct privacy fences, or maybe as a, uh, more macro scope, to treat one of their back, or one of their yards as if it were a backyard. On the, uh, on the back end of this memo, I've included some excerpts from, uh, borough code, and more particularly the zoning ordinance that shows or demonstrates to council how, uh, how borough code, how the zoning ordinance is set up and why it's a point of consternation for folks, for some folks that have this unique situation with their properties. Some people, uh, whether they have an irregular lot where they are at the, uh, at the point of two streets, and you could think of the, the numbered streets where they come out and meet with Ford. A lot of them create the triangular edges, uh, or another, uh, another hotbed, uh, for it is the folks that have, uh, homes that abut both the Calb Street and Ford Street. Uh, section, excuse me, I believe it's five sixty, uh, dash eighteen, which is basically the glossary, the terms defined of our zoning ordinance, states that a front yard shall be on a side that faces towards a public street whenever one public street abuts a lot. Therefore, whenever you have two public streets that abut your lot, you have two front yards, and therefore you are not, uh, you're, you're subject to, when you want to put up a fence, and not being able to put up a privacy fence because, uh, a fence above, is it six feet, Steve, cannot be erected in the front yard? Steve, uh, here, I'll unmute you, bud.
Sorry. Five, five feet in the front yard.
Um, while I have, while we have you unmuted, maybe you could, uh, chime in and, and let council know what your experience has been here.
So I've had numerous, uh, residents requesting privacy fence, like he said, and, um, the only way to get around it is to have someone come in front of the zoning hearing board. I took an unofficial ride around town, and I, I'm guessing there's about fifty properties that this could actually address, and that's, that's unofficial. So I, you know, anywhere there's a corner property and they, they have the required front yard or side yard, that side yard, if it's facing the street, is considered a front, um, a front yard. If I could, Keith, there was a, as I was sitting here and I kept reading the ordinance, I, I came up with maybe a possible solution that I would like to throw out since we're discussing, is if we do it the height, um, in increments. If you put, and this is just for consideration, if you put a four-foot solid fence at the, at the property line, and then maybe five foot back, jump it up to five feet, or, or seven and a half could be because of the required front yard setback would be fifteen, and then if you go back to the required setback, we might be able to go to the six foot. Now, that's just something I was thinking about while I was sitting here, where it might be able to accommodate everybody. Um, it's just an idea that I was thinking while I was sitting here. Um, what we're, what Keith and I have discussed is we're afraid these six-foot fences on corner lots would, would cause a site issue, number one. Um, that was the, one of the first priorities when people are pulling out of the corners, we, you know, you, you, you would lose that line of sight. The other thing we thought is maybe do a fifteen by fifteen line of sight, which is in our land development ordinance. Or reduce the height of the fence. I mean, we're open for discussions, but we've had numerous requests, and the hard part is we're putting somebody in front of the zoning hearing board, and the cost of the hearing is pretty much costing them more than the cost of the fence.
Correct. Thank you, Steve. And, and what, um, what, what Steve has suggested, it's, it's a good suggestion, but I don't know that, I shouldn't say I don't know that. I know at this point, we don't have a, uh, a fully fleshed out solution to present to council. It's just that folks aren't allowed to enjoy a, one of their two yards as if it were a backyard, and I think that it's, uh, could be argued that it's a bit unfair to make somebody go before the zoning hearing board and pay thirteen hundred dollars, and still not even necessarily be guaranteed the fact that they get a yes to their request to erect a fence that, uh, that, that meets those parameters of a, of a privacy fence, because when you have, when you're in the, uh, in the front yard, it's, the fences are held to a more stringent standard. Uh, they can't be as tall as standard privacy fences, and they have to be one-to-one fences. In other words, uh, one plank on, one plank off, so that you never truly get that, uh, that privacy fence, aesthetic or feel that, that people are looking for. So if council has any comments or ideas, I'm certainly willing to, uh, would like to hear them and entertain them. But what I was looking for this evening was authorization from council to, uh, to direct myself, Mr. Wanzick, uh, and perhaps our, uh, our solicitor and engineer to, uh, to explore and come up with a, uh, a solution, uh, i.e. an amendment to, uh, to the current language, to maybe, to come up with a, a, a way to circumvent or, or help these folks in this unique situation, because Steve said he did a, uh, just a drive-by straw poll. It's all about fifty, fifty properties that might, uh, that might be applicable, and I'd say over the past six to twelve months, we had five of those, a tenth of those people have voiced frustration and, and, and made inquiries about.
Well, let's, um, let's, uh, let's get you that authorization, and then we can discuss if anybody has any thoughts on the specifics, but we can do that, but I, I suppose we need a vote for that authorization.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Vote from, uh, motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Nolan, I believe, uh, to grant our borough administration and professionals the authority to start exploring some zoning changes, uh, addressing this issue of the dual front yards. Do we have any additional comments from council before the vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Then that is unanimous. All right.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, next, another.
We can stop for a moment. If anybody has any thoughts on the matter to cut, to send you on your way. I know the question I, I wanted to ask was, um, would we be looking at changes in zoning that would only apply to those fifty parcels? Is that a, uh, an overlay, subzone, a if, an if-then sort of thing, or is, uh, is it a change to all of the R-two zoning?
I, I think we have to look at, uh, explore all options and see whether or not it would be for a certain, uh, subsect or, or overlay district.
I didn't know if there were any statutory issues with carving out those specific parcels or not.
Well, currently, it's any residential district and any, anything in NC district, so it covers a, a majority of the, uh, wouldn't be just those fifty. The way the current code reads is it is anything in the three, uh, residential districts and the, uh, neighborhood commercial. Then when you get into the, uh, to, into the commercial district, beyond the NC, it, it changes. So it'll be residential. We're really dealing, I think, our, our concern here with this ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, would be just the residential districts.
That is correct, yes.
And I imagine that the, the kind of fence could make a big difference if, for line of sight. If someone has a chain link fence, you could see through that for traffic purposes. So I'm sure you're going to look into the, the, both the size, the placement, and the type of fence that you talked about with front versus rear.
Yeah, we, we have to make sure line of sight is never compromised. That is, that is one of the number one goals, irrespective of what outcome we, uh, we establish. Yes.
Uh, just if I, if I could add, um, just for perspective, the borough's ordinance is typical of, of most communities. It's
It is.
Uh, different. It's a typical thing. Um, I would, I would certainly not be guiding you towards changing the definition of side yard, front yard thing, that, that the, the, the reason that you have two front yards when you have a side property is, you know, and I know it's lost generate, you know, down the road, but side yard, side, uh, corner property typically have large yards to start with typically, right? Because you have to have a setback. The reason you need the bigger setback is to keep both street lines in line. If you, you know, if you think about townhouse, well, better, better example is you think about single-family homes. You have a single-family home, and your side yard was only five feet or ten feet, but your front yard was twenty feet or twenty-five feet. When you're on a corner, you don't want that yard, that side of that house only five or ten feet from the right away, and then the next home, that's a single-family that wants that street to be twenty, twenty-five feet back. So you, it creates both an aesthetic issue and a safety issue, and, you know, just all kinds of things. So the, the, we can certainly, and I'm happy to support Keith and Steve anyway, they need me to support, come up with how you defend things, but I wouldn't mess with the definition of the corner lot and the side front yard, my, my first opinion.
That's a fair point. I thank you. Anything further? All right, very good. Thank you all. Moving forward, uh, discussion pertaining to outdoor dining permitting during the COVID-related state of emergency. The next memorandum, uh, that you, uh, see your packets, members of council. I wish to discuss with you the drafting of a specialized permit application to address those restaurants wishing to install temporary outdoor dining during the current restrictions in place due to COVID, uh, wishing to, or who already have, I should say, installed temporary outdoor dining during the current restrictions in place. Currently have two restaurants that are engaging in it, uh, but I'm sure there are going to be more to follow, uh, and perhaps more that haven't even contemplated it yet. We already have an outdoor dining permit process in place, uh, which was adopted via resolution two thousand and fourteen dash five, uh, which again, I included attached with this memo. It is a little bit more on the restrictive side, and, and justifiably so, because the, the original intent of this outdoor dining, uh, resolution and permit was to establish more of a, uh, I guess, quote-unquote, uh, street front pro, uh, cosmetic for the municipality, or that, that, that was the vision at the time of, uh, of adoption of the resolution. And frankly, now we're at the point where this is, uh, we're, we're permitting and, and condoning outdoor dining, um, out of necessity in order to keep our restaurants and bars afloat. Let them survive, if not thrive, during these current conditions. And that being said, we do need to put some rules in place to ensure that A, outdoor crowds don't get larger than original indoor occupancy, uh, B, live music doesn't become a public nuisance, and C, proper fire lanes and parking needs are maintained. Now, I'm not saying that we have to, uh, shut down or, 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 or negate anything that, that is currently necessarily being done out there by our, our restaurants that are engaging in outdoor dining. I think we just need to, uh, simply create a temporary outdoor dining permit application, an evaluation process that allows restaurants to temporarily bypass the more stringent typical requirements, but would also come to an immediate, an immediate end once the state of emergency is lifted by the governor. So, uh, again, I would be looking for, uh, council's direction and authorization to, uh, direct my.
Mr. Truman, when you
Create a, create a permit.
I'm sorry.
No, sorry, Randy. Go ahead, sir.
I, I, I thought you, I'm, I'm having trouble with the audio, I suppose. When you say the, um, well, you're, there's something else that just came up when you finished, it, the, the state of emergency being lifted, um, I think that would take some definition, because I'm still under the impression that that's a, a wildly moving target, and I think what we're going to find out Friday is that what's green in June, or on June, you know, this Friday, um, was probably more like yellow back in May. So, um, what I guess I'd like to, to ask is, you know, what are you considering that emergency state, state of emergency being lifted? And the other thing is, when you say the occupancy doesn't exceed what was in, indoor, is that total indoor and outdoor, or in other words, are they going to be able to run indoor and outdoor with the indoor occupancy being what it always has been, plus the same amount outside, or are you talking about indoor and outdoor matching what the original indoor occupancy was? Does that make sense? Did I?
I, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I don't know if I could, I could necessarily answer intelligently on it though, Randy. It's my, so, so number one, going to green and the state of emergency being, that are two different things. Well, the state of emergency, once we go to green, we still have, um, heavy restrictions on us. Uh, we as, as, you know, commercial, commercial businesses, uh, still have restrictions in place during this green phase. Um, so I, I, I foresee the outdoor dining continuing on throughout the green phase, um, uh, until there is a, uh, a solid A-OK to, to move everything back indoors. It's my understanding that when businesses, or when restaurants, rather, excuse me, uh, opt to move back indoors, that that effectively negate their ability to proceed with outdoor dining, unless they already had an outdoor dining permit.
Maybe not, Keith, maybe not opt in, but when the, when they're granted permission to be back to a hundred percent occupancy.
Correct.
If you're doing more business outside, they may never opt to go back inside, but
Right.
Once they're granted that ability.
Correct.
I mean, I, to butt this with what Councilman Bennett and, uh, President Schenk said, even if the restrictions are lifted, it still might be recommended to have outdoor dining, and I think a lot of us would feel safer eating outdoors than indoors, um, even if we were out of the green and into whatever the next thing is, if there's not a vaccine for this pandemic. And we've seen cases in some states where, um, they opened up and then things got worse, et cetera. I know my family is not entirely open to going out, going to eat indoors with ventilation. Um, I would just have this go at least until the end of September, and then it gets cooler, and also it gets late, and gets darker earlier, and gets more annoying to neighbors, so you might want to change it then, but, um.
Well, we could also, we could also ask business owners to re-up every thirty days, uh, unless, unless we go to, you know, a hundred percent open or a hundred percent back to normal business, we could ask to, to have these permits looked at every thirty days, every sixty days. I don't know.
I would say at least sixty days. Thirty days is kind of obnoxious.
I think sixty's good, and I think you're talking about a limited number of, of applications to review, you know, every sixty days.
Yeah.
I would say sixty is probably, it sounds pretty good to me. Also, or through the summer, um, I don't know about expiring it at the end of the state of emergency, because I know there's been efforts in the state senate or state house to override the governor's state of emergency, whether or not that is happened to be good for public health or not. So I would not want to have this be tied to that if we have some, some sort of situation like that. Um, but I, I think through the summer, of course, um, I don't think you'd be seeing much outdoor dining in November, October, anyway.
Well, I, I would certainly, if, if you're looking for a motion to authorize, Keith, to authorize you to, to explore new language with, uh, the professional staff, I would make that motion, and I would hope that we do whatever we can do, um, to make life easy on the business owners in Bridgeport at this time, and be as lenient and, you know, accommodating as possible, to get them through, through this hump.
Absolutely.
And if Randy just made that motion, then I will second it, because, and now is the time for us to be working with our restaurants and coming up with creative solutions to help them get people in seats wherever they may be. I already have some ideas in mind from what I've been in my travels around Upper Marion and Concha Hocken, because that's all I do.
So I, uh, I have a, a motion from Mr. Bennett. I have a second from Ms. Nolan, uh, to direct our administration and professionals to look at revamping, uh, our language, or maybe developing an, uh, additional permitting uh, for outdoor dining during these times. Any, uh, additional comments from council?
And that includes being lenient between now and the next meeting, right? Because we have like almost a month until the next meeting, and we want to have some clarity between now and then.
Would we have a, would we need to have a formal vote on a, on a, say, a new permit, or is that something the administration can just roll out?
No, that's, that's something that the new, the new admin, or we could certainly just roll out. I don't think we need a, a vote on that, and of course, I would, I would show it to council prior to, for, for edit and critique prior to rolling it out. Yeah, nobody's, everybody, like I said, everybody wants to see the restaurants and the bars survive and thrive here, but, um, we, we can't do it at the risk of, uh, you know, having two hundred people in the parking lot where, you know, frankly, maybe only fifty or seventy-five should be permitted.
Oh, maybe what's even, what's even more important is just making sure that whatever we do is something that's, uh, applicable across the board, and we don't run the risk of, of one business having to jump through hoops that another doesn't.
Agreed.
I, I trust our professionals, the administration, to handle that. Uh, hearing that, are there any other comments? And, and certainly, we want to work, and we want to do our best to work with our businesses here in town. Uh, any other comments before we have a vote on that matter? Hearing none. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, folks.
All right. Thank you all. And additionally, for council consideration, authorization to pay bills and salaries, uh, for the month of June, two thousand and twenty.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Heard a motion made by Ms. Nolan, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, I believe, to pay the bills and salaries. Any additional comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, with that, the manager's, engineer's report portion of tonight's meeting, uh, is through, and we can move forward to pardon me, unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business, uh, members of council may have tonight? All right, uh, seeing none, we can move to the mayor's report. Mayor Barbie, do you have anything, uh, for, uh, public consumption this evening, sir?
I just want to, uh, say thank you, chief, and thank you to the, uh, Bridgeport Police Department. Thank you all for all of your help throughout the demonstrations over the past couple of weeks. And I would also like to thank Mark Jones, Bridgeport's own Mark Jones, for his leadership as well.
Thank you, mayor. Much appreciated. Very good. Moving forward, uh, chief's report. Chief Beretta, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, yes, I do. Good evening, everyone. Um, I know, obviously, we just got done talking about the emergency circumstances that we're in. Um, just to give you an update on the state, uh, we're about eighty-three thousand total cases positive COVID, with about five hundred ninety-six thousand negative cases. Seventy-eight percent of the persons that have gotten COVID have, have recovered. Locally in Bridgeport, we've had thirty-nine positive, uh, cases and one fatality connected to it. As, as goes everything, I just want to say, uh, to all the businesses in Bridgeport, everyone's been very, we've issued no citations, there's been no arrests. Um, in very difficult times for private businesses, uh, working hand-in-hand with governments to try to get through this together, and I'm pleased to be able to say that that has happened. Um, it's probably rare, but Bridgeport's really pulled together that way. It's probably rare, but Bridgeport's really pulled together that way. As far as the, uh, the other regulations going into green, um, on or about twenty-seventh of June, hopefully, um, still requirements for masking in businesses, uh, and other requirements. And we still would direct everyone to MOCOPA.org as well as the PA Department of Health. Um, and we'll post additional things up on the website, um, as we go into green, just to remind people. Like everyone else has said, is that it's not over. We're shifting on a different phase. We want everyone to be healthy. We don't want to be like some of the southern states have, uh, have really been hit hard with spikes. So let's try to work together through this, whether we agree or not agree. Um, and everyone's done that. As we move into, um, as we move into the next phase and holidays, um, it talks about fireworks under municipal code, uh, chapter two eighty-four, uh, there's either display or commercial, um, for fireworks. Um, and we'll be posting some information up on sites is that there's significant restrictions for the use of any significant firework, anything that has so many milligrams of explosive powder, um, that can be launched unless there's significant space, which there generally isn't in Bridgeport, um, you can't do that. And so for the health and safety of everybody else in a, in a closed, tight-knit community, um, we're going to ask people to refrain from, um, launching those kind of fireworks and those kind of displays. The noise ordinance, just to go along with it. So noise ordinance is chapter, uh, five sixty, uh, section thirty-five, where it talks about, uh, after eight o'clock is, uh, sixty decibels and between eight PM and seven AM is sixty decibels. Let's try to help each other out with this. Um, everyone's been pretty good. I know people have been cooped up, um, but let's try to, uh, maintain, um, those, those noise issues for our, our friends and neighbors. Uh, thank you, mayor, uh, for, uh, your, your positive comments. I appreciate it. We've had some, um, of the peaceful protests. So there might be upwards of, at one point, at one time, maybe upwards of three hundred people, um, and maybe, uh, the low side of thirty. But we all learned a little bit about each other. We got through it safely. We worked together to positive end. So, uh, that being said, um, we're going to follow rules and regulations. Bridgeport's bound together by so many different ties. It's, and it's wonderful seeing the dialogue that's created sometimes, uh, because of difficult times. One of those things is the different food programs the police department has been shepherding along for at least the last eighteen months. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Neary owner Depot Street Bar, our business, uh, and our business or government and private co-ops have been fantastic during this time. I mean, I can't tell you how, how many positive things from that, but just last six weeks we've had, we've put out upwards of about ninety meals a week, one way or another because of that. And thank Mr. Les Neary with the Depot Street for the, uh, the last six weeks of the Bridgeport Pizza Project, our program, as well as with Fat Boy Deli on Wednesdays, with some additional corporate lease pizzas that are getting out to folks. Uh, we also hope to get back to, uh, working with mom's meals to help people on a more sustained rate for those people that need it. So thanks again. Uh, also for Fusion Inc., they supplies antimicrobial masks, great thing, helped out the, the, the police department. Just the normal stuff. Uh, Little Pantry, uh, Bill Derry's one of local real estate guys dropped off a whole, like, uh, a bunch of stuff, the Little Pantry, along with the AOH ladies, uh, that dropped off five carloads worth of food. I'm sure Ms. Gundrum has her, uh, house full of different foods to restock the Little Pantry. So we're there all of the time. It's all working very well. And, and to finish up, uh, Jerry Canane, sergeant, spent, uh, thirty-plus years here at Bridgeport PD. No one should ever be forgotten for many years of service. Um, we were able to do what we could do, and that was his final ride. Um, we had a parade of, uh, police cars that went back and forth. We had a few words, people were masked up, unfortunately, and there were some social distancing involved, but, uh, thank you for Sergeant Jerry Canane for his years of service. We will catch up and have that, uh, additional, um, alumni, uh, party, most likely later in the year that it will connect with, because we can't forget, it's the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of also the Bridgeport Police Department. Many years of service to the residents of Bridgeport. Uh, just recently, just to, to, to thank our cooperation between the administration side and the police department side, working hand-in-hand with each other to try to further our training and, uh, be there where Bridgeport needs us.
All right. Thank you, Chief Beretta. Next up on the agenda is new business. Are there any items of new business that, uh, members of council may wish to discuss?
Yeah, Mr. Truman, I'll jump in briefly. This is a, a good follow-up to the chief's report. So folks, again, there's been so much discussion, uh, recently about police reform. And I just, uh, I thought this would be a good time just to remind everybody in town that council did, uh, last year allocate money in our budget for protocol and policy updates, uh, for the department. You know, our, our department, I believe in a lot of ways is ahead of the curve in their community outreach and, and we see that with, with what our neighbors and the residents here have to say about the department. And the chief just described so much of what our department does. And he didn't even touch on a lot of the de-escalation training, uh, and, and other items that our, our police have done that other departments may not even be up to speed on yet. Uh, but that said, we did budget some monies for this year, uh, to formally update those policies and procedures. So I guess, uh, what I'm just going to do here is ask our borough manager, ask the chief, ask our solicitor's office to please, uh, get those policies and procedures updates, uh, on the front burner. Let's get those prioritized and let's keep an eye on some of the reform bills that are coming out of Harrisburg, uh, and maybe some of the other recommendations that are coming from expert, expert groups out there. Uh, you know, maybe white papers are published, maybe some, uh, some best practices are thought through and put out there by folks that know what they're talking about. And keep an eye on those as we update those policies and procedures. So that's all I have to say, but just, uh, let's prioritize that so we can make sure that the public is aware that that's something we are doing, uh, that we prioritize and that we want to be transparent about and get out there so that everybody feels safe and, and taken care of in this town.
Will do.
Very good. Any other items of new business this evening?
Um, I don't know if this counts as new business or public comment, but Councilman Bennett, um, as a member of the Parks Board, do you have any updates on, um, what will be open starting this weekend with the county moving to green? I know many people are asking about, um, being able to use the playground and other equipment.
Um, I'm going to hold, I'm going to wait until this, Friday's here and they, well, I should say the, the park, where I bring them a lot of that material though, and, um, we'll see, make sure exactly how they define green when it gets here. But our intent is that, once we are officially in the green phase of reopening, that the playground, the parks will be fully open. The leagues that are permitted at our, that hold permits at the park, uh, that being Little League, um, our girls softball program and Bachi, they've, they all, they're all governed by, uh, bodies that have their own set of rules, but, um, and their rules generally supersede ours, but as soon as we are officially in the green phase, our playground will reopen. And that's the last, um, and our, and that's our, that's the last amenity at the park that's not fully open right now.
All right. Anything further insofar as new business? All right, uh, seeing none and confirming to council that we received no public comment for, uh, tonight's proceedings, uh, we could certainly move forward with entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I heard a motion from, uh, Ms. Nolan, second, and from Mr. Scott. Folks, uh, we are adjourned. It's eight thirteen. Again, we hope to see you in person soon at Borough Hall. This is our fourth Zoom meeting, I believe, uh, and it's getting old. We miss your faces, so we hope we all can see you soon. Have a wonderful night and, uh, be safe, folks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Night.